This is the Thursday.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth of January two thousand and nineteen planning board meeting. So, let's start off with a consideration of minutes and anybody see any changes that needed to be made?
No.
Will we approve them?
We get a motion to...
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, most of you guys have been here before. Fenton, you've certainly been here before, Steve, honorary number and all. So, basically, we are gonna go through the agenda. Tonight is a pretty straightforward one, just really some zoning amendments we're gonna go through. And Fenton has a non-binding preliminary discussion, which for anyone who does not remember that before is basically you can come before the board, you can ask some questions. It allows applicants to know which direction to go on different things and things like that. Before we get started, is there anybody who has any questions for the board before we get started? About general planning board items, non pertaining to... Nobody? Okay. Anybody here? No. All right. All right, so first up, we have the two thousand and nineteen zoning amendments public hearing, which if anybody has forgotten is the residential tenting and recreational vehicles. And then also under amending section seventeen point eight point five as follows. And... That was it for that. So, do I understand correctly we need to open a public session about that?
Just open the public hearing for comment, and you need to review what the changes are.
Okay. So, and do I need a motion?
No.
No. All right, so we're gonna open the public session for this. And we're gonna review what the changes are. So, the residential tenting and recreational vehicle section of our zoning has been gone through quite a few times. So, currently, under ten point four of the residential tenting and recreational vehicles, it says, "In order to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the community, occupancy of residential tents and recreational vehicles will be allowed provided that the following requirements are met. The codes enforcement officer is designated as the authority for enforcement of this ordinance." Ten point four point one limitation, "Such occupancy of either tents or recreational vehicles on any lot requires one of the following conditions to be met." And here are the changes. A, limit to one recreational vehicle and two tents at a time. Additional tents or RVs may be available by permit, meaning that if you were to exceed that number, you can go see the codes officer and he may give you additional permits. Uses permitted April fifteenth through October thirtieth. This is a safety, I have a safety concern with cold weather and stuff. The rest of the ordinance is unchanged, which is C, "The lot has toilet facilities connected to an onsite operational subsurface septic waste system." Or D, "Temporarily maintained toilet facilities are provided in the lot at all times. There is occupancy of either tent or recreational vehicle." Or E, "In case of an RV with septic cooling tank, proof of proper disposal of septic waste at a state licensed facility must be available on site at all times and presented to the codes enforcement officer upon request." So, why don't we talk about ten point four residential tenting and recreational facility changes? See if anyone in the audience has any concerns or comments or such.
I got a comment.
Sure.
Who's gonna enforce it?
That would be the codes officer.
But he's not here on the weekend.
Okay.
So now what do we do? You're gonna slap me on my wrist and I'll do it again, slap me on my wrist. I mean, how many times are we gonna do this? There's no enforcement in town.
True. I mean...
To cover this ordinance.
Let me just say that this is the planning board. We don't handle enforcement. We handle writing the zoning, and that's what we're doing.
Right, but I'm making my comment because the code office is sitting there.
That would be a better, something directed to the selectmen, since they handle the overtime, handle, you know, police, handle whatnot. We just talk about zoning.
I have one of our selectmen here, so we can...
He's here. You feel free to ask him.
Well, I'll present it to the board. He can't make a single decision. I mean, I expressed my comments, and he heard me. It's on tape, and then we can discuss it whenever we meet again.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, the way this is written right now. So, what's the intent of this? You could only use it from April fifteenth to October thirtieth?
For, you know, if you were gonna spend the night on the property.
Okay. Unfortunately, you didn't change the first line. "Such occupancy of either tents or recreational vehicles on any lot requires one of the following conditions to be met." Can't have that. All you gotta do is meet one, you can live there twenty...
Give me all of the conditions.
It's written wrong. Try and get it. Absolutely.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah. It's the same thing as last year. Same problem as last year.
Yep.
You gotta change one to...
All.
Well, you gotta make it read right, so...
Are we able to do that now that that has been posted?
We can, we can change it and have another hearing. And we're early enough, so we can have another hearing. The board has to go to...
Well, it'd need to be reposted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, Jake, let me read what it says and what, tell me what it says out loud closely.
We can continue it. We don't have to repost it.
Continue it to a date certain. Does not have to be reposted.
Okay. So, well, you did it, well...
The problem is, it shouldn't be four things in there. It should be, the first, can I see that?
Yeah, well, you gotta be careful. A and B don't have anything to do with C and E.
A and B have to be, A and B...
Have to be separate.
Right, have to be separate. And then C, D, and E are separate.
Ten dot four dot one ought to be A and B, and then ten dot four dot two, and I'm not sure what the numbering is.
So, A and B should be by itself, when it said, "One of the following after..."
Yeah, so you gotta have, you gotta have septic.
Let's square it away right now, so that we can...
Well, you got the whole ordinance? What's ten point four point two?
A and B should be before, should be before ten point four point one.
Here, if you want, I'm gonna bring up my... Oh.
But what, it's gonna read something along the lines of...
One of the following is one of the...
It's, it's C, D, and E.
A and B have, A and B go no matter what. C, D, and E are one of the, are one of the following.
So, where do you add this? Did you add it?
This, A and B should be before ten point four point one.
But, but what you wanted to read is something, "Such occupancy of either tents or recreational vehicles on any lot is limited to one recreation," is limited, so you take out the following conditions to be met.
Yep. Is limited to one...
Is limited to A, one recreational, and B permitted use, uses permitted from April fifteenth to October thirtieth.
I wouldn't even put it as A and B. I would just say, "Such occupancy of either tents or recreational vehicle on any lot is limited to one recreational vehicle and two tents at a time. Additional tents or RVs may be available, and the uses permitted off of April fifteenth to October thirtieth."
Right. And then say, "In addition, one of the following..." One of the following conditions must be met.
Yeah, if you're looking back at what's in here, that just goes, the new wording just goes as a modifier up to the ten point four paragraph.
Yep.
And then ten point four point one stays the same as it was.
Yeah, I just believe in the B before the ten point four point one.
But, but I mean, that, the reason for the ten point four point one is, it is a limitation. A and B are a limitation.
Right.
I would just put, like we talked about, I would put it...
Make it one line in the beginning, other limitations, and then say, "In addition, one of the following must be met."
Must be met.
That reads right. So, what, you got January, what, do you have to have it by March of the time?
Okay, we're gonna have to defer to meeting and access.
All right, so let me just read this through, and then let's... Limitations, "Such occupancy of either tents or recreational vehicles on any lot is, is it any lot, is limited to one recreational vehicle and two tents at a time. Additional tents or RVs may be available by permit." Period, or and, yep. And...
No, say, "In addition."
In addition, the...
One of the following must be met.
No, we, we still have the...
Dates.
Yeah. I would put a period. "The uses permitted April fifteenth through October thirtieth."
Yep.
"In addition, the following conditions must be met."
One of the following.
In addition, one of the following conditions must be met.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Can I get a motion to change the proposed zoning to the wording as, as read?
As some move.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, I have a question.
I should.
When, can I ask when the last time we had an issue that this ordinance would correct?
That'd be a question for Jack.
Twenty seventeen, I think, is what you're saying, right? Yep. Which is what generated this change to begin with.
And so, in twenty eighteen, you didn't have an issue like this?
No.
So, that goes back to my theory that we're over-regulating. If we don't have a reason. Thank you.
I think it, it was something happened in two thousand and seventeen that created a problem. So, this was proposed and changed, and ever since then, we've been trying to get the wording right. So, it was, for lack of a better word, right. So, I mean, this allows somebody to use their property, which I think originally you weren't even very limited on what...
Four weeks.
Yeah. It was, that was part of the other problem with it. I don't think you were here at the time. Basically, you could own a lot of land, piece of land, and you could only camp on it for four weeks. And it was hard to administer, because I think you, it was like...
You said, "Well, what, four weeks? I wanna go this weekend, and I'm gonna be there Thursday and Friday, and I don't know."
So, it was, we were trying to fix that. And I think everybody more felt that if you had a piece of land, you should go out and camp.
Put the septic part of that in there too, so...
Yeah, we added the septic part a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
My only question to that is, where do you draw the line between an RV and a mobile home?
Well, it doesn't really matter. It's all contained in what it says right there. Manufactured house, that's different.
Well, I'll go back to, by Aunt Mary's con, if somebody was living in a recreational vehicle attached to a septic for a long time. I'm not gonna name names.
Okay.
But, I mean, if it's, if you have a rec, that's my point. When does a recreational vehicle become a mobile, become manufactured houses?
Can't. Never will.
So, you don't know of any incidents where somebody just took a trailer and put it up on a block?
I know of instance of one, yes, I do.
But that's my point. You're gonna make them homeless as soon as you pass this. Right?
But it's not allowed.
But, but, but that's my point. Why isn't it allowed? That's, that's what I'm getting, I'm going back to his argument. Why are you gonna limit somebody, if it's properly connected to septic?
Correct.
Why does it matter that it's a recreational vehicle on four blocks and it stays there all winter?
Our zoning doesn't allow it. I mean, it's, we have manufactured districts, we have regular districts and all that.
Okay. All right, so you're going back to the district argument.
For something that's permanent.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to get there. I mean, I'm just playing devil's advocate, like he was doing. But I was just trying to think through what the, I guess it would be on a district basis.
Mobile homes are allowing four blocks within town.
What's that? As reasonable?
As devil's advocate.
No, no, I was talking about me.
Mobile homes are meant for two trips. One to the place they're going and one to the sprawler. RVs are meant to be moved from one place to another on a regular basis.
No, I did, but you see where I was going. I'm just trying to get, get where, what's the, you know... Do we, excuse me, we still have an exception in there? If you have a home under construction that you can stay up to...
Two years. One year at a time, renovable to two years.
So, that covers the other issue as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah. In one of these RVs, I went to one site once. They pulled, they pulled, they pulled the T-handle...
Right.
On the property.
Right. No, I, I have no issue with that. Well, that's the reason it was written that way. But as long as you can do it under construction for a year, then that's reasonable.
All right. And I, I don't remember, did we vote?
We did. You voted.
Yes, you did. Okay.
So, amend section, so we're moving on to the next item. Amend section seventeen point eight point five as follows. Lifetimes. If after a permit has been authorized by a board, such permit is not lifted from the office of the codes enforcement officer within a period of strike six months, two years from the date of authorization, then such authorization shall be null and void. Strike and no permit shall be issued thereafter and put in unless further extended by local ordinance or by the zoning board adjustment for good cause. And I think this was something you were running into, so I'll let you explain what the...
Well, it used to be six months. Well, it used to be six months. So, someone came in in November, October, got a variance to do this. Now it freezes up. Now they come back in May, six months has gone by if you have a variance. And it used to be that way at the state too, and the state had changed to two years. So, that's why this was there.
So, this is just an adjustment to bring us in line with what the state calls...
It synchronizes the change to state law. So that the zoning board can follow the same rules that the state has passed. So, now we're, an applicant will have two years from the date instead of six months.
That makes sense.
Yeah. So, it's, it's not open-ended, it's not twenty years or ten years, but it's a, it's a period of time that...
And that's just to do what they go to variance for. And it doesn't extend, then, well, it's a variance, they don't really say it's a variance, but, like, a special exception for a property or something that you get, that doesn't extend that. Once their use is not done for a year, that goes away. This doesn't change that. This is just for something that they get from the ZVA for a variance. I don't know if that should be in there or not, so...
The variance lasts, the variance will last up to two years.
Correct.
Whereas if, by the special exception, you get, let's just say you get a variance or something
for a business, and you need a variance to get it, and you do that right away. And then you stop doing that, this doesn't extend that for two years. We still have another rule that if that business is no longer operating for a period of one year, it goes back to the original use of the property. It goes back to residential, or whatever the property was used for.
Or zoning, or the, what are the zoning, then, you mean?
Correct. Yes.
Is this strictly for a variance?
I didn't write it, so...
Yeah, but on the like, well, I mean, is, does it, is the intent of this just to be for the ZVA permits?
I would think so, yes. That's why...
Then I would change it if, after a permit has been granted, not authorized, because they're granted, by the ZVA. You got the word authorized in here, not the septic. If after a permit has been granted by the ZVA, and such permit has not been lifted from, not been, whatever you do with it. But I would change it, just put the ZVA in there and say, "Granted."
But a special exception goes with the property.
Not forever.
What's the limit on that?
If it's not done within a year, it goes away. It's in our zoning, that's been there for, since I started.
Special exception?
It's anything. Any use that's non-conforming to the law, such exception is non-conforming. You have to get a special exception to do it. If that's not run for a year, it goes back to the original.
Yeah, if it's closed down for more than a year. I mean, my only suggestion to clarify that is you're actually talking about the ZVA, because it says like, it's written funny. Or it's not. It does say ZVA at the end of it, but not at the beginning.
I think just put by the board of adjustment. Now fix it. It says by the board. Just put by the board of adjustment.
Well, I wouldn't say authorized, I would say granted. Change the word authorized, granted by, by the board of adjustment.
I just wanna make it clear that I actually double-checked prior to noticing this. I double-checked the actual state language, and the state language says authorized.
Does.
Authorized, yeah.
So, I don't know if you wanna change, I mean, Mark, am I correct?
Yes.
But this is verbatim from the state's language.
And by all means, yes.
Please.
By the board, that's it? Doesn't say board of adjustment?
Well, hold on a second.
Hold on. I did not check the state RSA. I apologize for that. So, thank you, Leanne, for being diligent enough to do that.
Well, and I wanna, just if you can give me one second, everybody?
Sure.
So, in the zoning... In our zoning ordinance, seventeen, section seventeen, is section seventeen, board of adjustment.
Okay, that's fine.
So, you're only seeking to...
So, all seventeen, do you want to see the...
So, you don't need to specify ZVA, because that is an entire section.
Yep.
And it starts out with seventeen one, is the board of adjustment shall have the powers and duties specifically granted to it under RSA six seventy-four thirty-three. And then we go through membership rules, which is seventeen two, seventeen three, seventeen four, and this is seventeen eight five. So...
So, so authorized was the term used on the state's...
Yeah, I'm actually gonna pull it up.
Let's leave it just like that.
Well, and it's in our regs, is it? All of this wording is in our regs now, except for the red.
That's correct.
So, it's all, it's all part of what's in here.
Right. If it's under the ZVA section, then it makes more sense. It, it looked like that was under definitions, just the way it's seen in the law.
Yep.
And under definitions, that doesn't make sense.
I think the more we can have this match the state regulations...
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
...the more it's gonna be as worded.
So, all we're looking to do is change, is change six months to two years in our ordinance, and to change the wording at the end of the last sentence.
Correct.
So...
We're trying to deregulate it. Imagine that, Steve.
And that coincides with the state's...
Yeah, I'm reading the state right now, just so, I mean, I did this before, just because I wanted to make sure the proposed language from the ZVA was never in the state. And I did confirm it, but I just wanna, just for the sake of being on the public record, I gotta find it though, that's the thing. It's wordy.
When I read through it, I just saw that it was being pushed from six months to two years.
Yep.
Because we're already in sync with what the state.
Yes.
But I did not know enough to catch off the...
Simplifies it, clarifies it, whatever.
Yes.
Good job on the deregulation.
So, I'm in RSA six seventy-four thirty-three, and I'm finding, it speaks in a couple areas, like... Okay, here it is. So, it's actually section, so it's RSA six seventy-four thirty-three, I... A... Actually, I, A, and then B. And it states, notice, the notice shall state that variance is, oh, you don't even have a date in here. Should be valid. Date of notice or as further extended by the zoning board of, that's the local ordinance, or the zoning board of adjustment for good cause. So, that's the section.
I don't have any problem with that. I mean, all we're basically doing is changing that from six months to two years. Does anybody else, anything to add? Anybody? Can I get a motion?
Wait, first you're gonna close the public hearing?
Sorry?
And then, second, you need to make a motion to move to the R, to two thousand and eighteen.
But the other one has to be extended.
Just this one.
Right.
You need to close the public hearing, or the other one.
We need to move it to the date, sir.
Okay. So, before we do this, I'm just gonna let you know, I pulled up the meeting calendar law, and we have to have, hold the public hearing prior to, no later than February fourth, and our next meeting is the seventh. So, two weeks from now is January thirty-first. So, I would recommend either canceling the seventh meeting, but we need to have it before the fourth, so...
Why don't, why don't we cancel the meeting on the seventh and have it on the first?
That's what I would recommend.
Anybody have an issue?
No.
All right.
Okay.
So...
So, the date certain would be January thirty-first.
What would be the motion? I have a motion to...
Post that tomorrow.
Yep. I have a motion to move the public hearing on ten point four point one. The changes to limitations to a date certain of January thirty-first.
I will move that.
Second?
Aye.
And then, we're gonna close the public hearing.
For, limit to lifetimes. You're not closing it for the other one.
So, we are gonna close the public hearing.
All right.
For the lifetimes, seventeen point eight point five. Limitate, ten point four point one limitations is still open and continued to...
January thirty-first.
And the February seventh meeting is canceled, so to speak. So, can we get that all down to very exact, so we make sure we're all legal and...
Yes, the only thing I need is a motion to move the seventeen point eight point five to town one.
Can I have a motion to move seventeen point eight point five...
To town one, to as some move.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Maybe we got that. Fenton, thank you for catching that. You were very correct. All right. So, the next thing on the agenda is Fenton Marnin. So, Fenton is here for a preliminary, for a sample. I do not know whether we need to read on the preliminary, the addresses and such and so forth, but this is at Mountain Shadows, which is on New Road. It is an existing sand pit, and this is one of the things we're gonna deal with under one fifty-five E. So, Fenton, there you go.
So, what we, I should have, and I apologize for my highlights. This is our lot. It's twenty-four, what is it, three, one, twenty-four, okay? It's a twenty-six acre piece, and unfortunately, just for you guys, it's here all the way down the road to Rose and Butters. Way down there and come back, yeah, take a left, yeah, right to, right there and back at the property. That's the entire piece. The excavation area is this little dot up here, okay? That's it. So, this is about a third of an acre. The hashed part, which I'll change the hash, and where those lines are close together, that's the entire pit. It's about eighty feet by a hundred and twenty feet.
Do you need, Google Earth pictures of it or anything?
Yeah, well, that's, this is from Google Earth, but I can bring you some Google Earth.
Just some satellite pictures, so you can see the trees and all that, so...
Yeah, yeah, this, yeah, this, this was actually, Peter Cooper Doc did this.
Yeah.
From Google Earth.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we can, I can bring you Google Earth. Yeah. So, so that's it. The balance of this, I mean, the reason we did this is the, that's the entire lot. So, it's, but the, the total excavation area would never be more than, you know, maybe another half an acre, you know...
It can be whatever's been grubbed.
Right, which is...
For years.
Grubbed, I mean, down over the tree line and...
Two thousand fourteen, fifteen-ish, whatever's been grubbed at that point.
Right, which was more than what's grown here at the walls.
So, what we, what we did with Steve Fenton and what we're gonna do, we're gonna... So what we, what we did with Steve Fenton and what we're gonna do with all of these.
Yeah.
Is that we go around, one of the conditions of approval on Steve's, and I think the board's kind of felt it when they come forward, is that when you bring it in and you outline your area, which was grubbed out.
Oh, so you wanna put more on there, okay.
We walk it.
We walk it.
And flag it.
And we blaze and flag it.
Did this one today. That's where all the blazes are, all of these.
And then we drive, and what, but on Steve's, we weren't able to, the ground was obviously frozen. We're just gonna put a few pieces of rework, a couple allocations, and I think the other condition on Steve's.
You need a prep test, prove where the water table is, somewhere in the vicinity of the pit.
Is that the bottom of it or is it the top?
You gotta, you gotta state where the seasonal high water table is.
If you can find it.
If you can find it. Yeah, I'm just.
No, no, well, I mean, up high, it's not above thirty feet, so.
Right, right. But that's all has, that's part of the condition.
Well, I mean, so obviously we're at the springtime at this point.
Correct.
So, okay.
On that condition.
On that condition, yeah, that's.
Yeah, yeah. So basically, take, take some, you know, Google Earth, two thousand fourteen, around there.
Show what's roughly what's grubbed out.
Good.
There you go. Doesn't need to be exact, you know, grubbed out. You'll come in, pretty straightforward, you know, just wanna make sure the water's not, you know, it's self-draining. And then you get conditions of approval, one of them, when Jack and I will go out.
You'll want to wait till springtime on that right now, particularly if you're gonna get computers, though.
I mean, I'll do it whenever.
Yeah, we have to do it afterwards if.
Yeah, you won't see anything.
See, I submitted this with my application.
Yeah, no, I've got to say, if, if, if it's under.
Yeah. If it's under seven yards tall and you have two feet of snow, it's grubbed out.
Right. Oh, well, yeah.
I'm lucky to remember back to last week.
So, so just, so, so beyond the grubbed out area, if you wanna expand in the future, what's, what's the plan?
It's a full boat, AOT, everything.
But AOT's at a hundred thousand square feet.
Right, you'd never meet that.
No, I mean, I'd be, that's never gonna happen.
But no, that's a full boom.
Just an application to you guys, because there's no state.
Special reception.
Your hundred thousand yards a year.
A special exception.
Special exception. When you get beyond the area that's grubbed out.
That's what's grandfathered, what's grubbed out. That's all what grandfathered, is what was opened back in.
Two thousand fourteen.
Fourteen-ish area, yeah.
Do that on Google Earth today, does it have fourteen?
Oh, you're going back to.
Well, I know you can't.
Eighty something.
That's not the point.
Yeah, fourteen, they get a couple.
You can get about a photo here, roughly.
Yeah.
Fourteen, fifteen.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'll see what they want. I mean, they have June second of this year is when, that was the most current one.
Yeah.
But I mean, we're gonna, we'll go, and you can go down.
Well, well, you can't, no, you can't go down. Down, it'd be, down's gravel. I mean, down's clay layer.
Oh.
Yeah, this is, this, this is really not a hole in the ground. This actually goes up.
Yeah, I can see.
Yeah, you go up into it, correct.
Yeah, just, it's, well, we're just taking the sand down, you know, so. Yes.
So that's what's grandfathered, is what was opened in.
So what was that material you wrote?
So and then, like, slope-wise, I mean, unless you wanna get an engineer to sign off on like a one-to-one slope.
Yeah.
You know, then go two-to-one.
Two-to-one.
For what? For, for your?
Finished slopes, right.
Yeah, mostly, most of it's already reclaimed itself with brook trees and bike trees and.
Right, right, right.
You'll see it when you get out there. The little stuff's kinda, it, that's a kinda funny when you say, you know, what was grubbed out three or four years ago, 'cause I mean, there's saplings growing up.
Oh, I know. We, we take that consideration. I mean, if the nineteen-inch tree there wasn't.
No, 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 yeah, right, okay. Yeah, no, this is not, all right, well, we're.
You can ask Steve on what we did today.
Yeah, today you can do it. My only thought is, if you're gonna get two feet of snow on Sunday, I'm good on like April May if you guys are.
Oh, that's fine. You haven't got an application anyways.
Well, I did. Actually, I just handed it to him.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I did.
We haven't a meeting yet, so it's.
Yeah, you just, well, I mean, that's, my point is, yeah, at least we're getting on board.
Storm my business.
Yeah.
So, Neil? If you came to this planning board with the application next month.
He just moved to here.
Huh?
He just moved to here right now.
No, 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 no. A regular meeting in four weeks, okay? Would be, I think, if you were ready, when you could bring the application in here, twenty-four. But it's, but it's after that that.
You probably have this application ready for ZAM.
Well, I do, the, yeah, the, yeah, all I have to do, I mean, I'll get Google Earth, which is, I have the overlay actually sitting on a computer. Uh, which is how, this is how we did this originally. I can put the, the line that's outlined around it, that's easy. The only other thing I picked up that's missing on here is sideline setback's up to be twenty-five feet. Twenty, twenty or twenty-five.
So what we did on.
All it states is fifty feet for non.
Non-perishable.
No, uh, disapproving of butter.
Disapproving of butter. And we're just assuming everybody's disapproving, so we're just going fifty.
Well, yeah, this is a hundred, well, we're fifty, you're, there's, we're no idea fifty. Okay. Well, that's easy.
It's not meant to be a big deal.
Well, no, and I was, I understood that. That's why I, I filled it out for her. She's got the abundant listed, but you might as well sit on that. Yeah, temporarily. Let's get the plan updated, now that I know what you guys want. That's easy.
We have plenty of time, Fenton. We've got February twenty-first, and we can even go, I believe, March seventh.
Make sure you put, like, I'm sure you store stumps in here.
No, not much.
Fenton, surely you store stumps in there.
I can, okay.
Yeah. So, anything that, activity that you have, that's, you know, like typical law, you know.
Right, sandy gravel.
Sand, gravel, stumps, you know, maybe you must have ground some stumps up or something. You know, you wanna make sure that you put that down.
Well, but, I mean, yeah, okay, put it down as.
As one of the things you do with your pit.
Yep. Stone, you must take your excess stone and put it in there.
Right. So where do you, what do you want, you want it listed out separately on the plan, or you just wanna put it in that little hole or do it as piles?
Maybe you'd like to be a consultant to.
It should certainly.
What did you do?
You should certainly have on the public record.
Put on the show.
All these things, yeah.
Put my glasses on.
Yeah, but, see, one of my piles is this big.
That's okay, that's okay. See, this is my, my stumps, compost piles. This is where my boulders are.
Okay, so what we'll do is, I'll do a blow-up. I might shred this in half, do a blow-up of that.
We don't need all of this. We just need.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a local plan, but, yeah, I'll cut this scale in half, and we'll just do a blow-up of that and put what you did.
As a whole.
Put those areas.
I get it. That's why I'm asking. That's why we're here.
Perfect.
Thank you so much. We have a plan.
That is my local, my local.
Yep.
Separate.
Yeah, that's.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good on that one, definitely.
All right. Uh, I'm just, side question. How many of these are there? Like fourteen or fifteen?
No.
Seven, six?
Yeah, half a dozen.
Yeah.
Steve is the, Steve is the first one to do it. You would be number two. If you run into anybody else, please encourage them to do it.
Yeah, but Dolly's got a pit.
The ones that should come in are you, Steve.
Mike Carlton plans.
Mike, Mel Beans, Dolly, Fred.
Yes.
He's having a survey.
He's gonna go to the ZBA first.
So he doesn't have to meet the deadline.
Oh, so then he doesn't have to meet, right. So he's fine.
But he, that's, for what he has there, that's smart, because.
Right. Know what they use for that.
Yeah. So, yeah, if you're.
So, so just to back up again, in the event that we wanna extend this, when we did the permit for Stockman two or three years ago, AOT's not gonna come in. So if you're gonna add a half an acre to, again, it's.
No, then you don't.
We're getting down into the, to the miniscule levels. That's, it's just not, there's no state permits involved, because it's less than an acre.
You're gonna, you're gonna get a, just like Steve did.
You gotta go get a special exception.
No, you're gonna get a condition that is set states that, you know, this, what we're doing is grandfathering under one fifty-five E. It doesn't exempt, because we're gonna make sure the town's assets, you know, blood's covered, is, say, this does not exempt you from the state regulation, environmental regulation, this and that, or whatever.
Well, but, but I, I guess my point is, the only thing you're hitting at, at the state level would be AOT.
Right.
And when they did Stockman's pit, maybe it was based on a state, but they did it for five acres at a time.
Right, but they did the whole thing. They phased it, but they did an AOT for the whole thing.
Right.
So they don't have to come back and do that later.
Right, but, but my, my point is, the whole pile of sand that I'm talking about never hits a hundred thousand square feet, so the AOT.
So you're exempting the AOT, but you still need all the other plants.
But I'm just, yeah, so if we came in here to you guys, we've been, since it's already been basically surveyed, it, it would be pretty straight. You, you, well, you have to, if you're gonna expand it, are you going to the ZBA? I mean, I'm asking.
You have to go to the ZBA for expanding it. You're going for like a new pit, special exception.
Is that what we, is that what they did with, with Stockman's pit, what the ZBA told us? On the special exception, it's not as apparent.
Because gravel pits allow it in certain zones, based on special exception. So this is grandfathering what's in operation right now. Or a back and forth.
No, that, I'm just trying to get my head, which we're the, this, you know, again, for a hundred yards a year, to take out much sand, if we don't get too far a hundred yard radius.
Well, if you grandfather things that you use.
Well, right, exactly. And, and literally, since we started this fourteen years ago, ninety percent of it, minus an area less than this room, has already pretty much recovered itself.
Right.
If you stand back, it grows trees real quick.
So it's more reclaim themselves.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's pretty interesting, actually. Okay, I'm good.
Anybody else?
Tell us, I've got, you got nothing?
On what? On yours? Well, I got a lot of things, but I'm, we're on yours right now.
Steve doesn't think we should have to do any of it. All right. Um, I think that's it for sand pits right now. I think we're on to discussion items. Uh, so we have two, planning board membership and two thousand and eighteen annual report. Planning board membership is a continuing conversation, because as we know, shortly here, the ice is gonna go all the way from the Saki, and I'm not gonna do this anymore. So.
Uh, I have someone to put before the board. He says it's okay if I float his name here. I think you may know him, Gary Qua, Q U A.
Sure.
My neighbor.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, anyway, he, uh, he told me to go ahead and, you know, say something, but he would like, if you permit, that he would call you and, you know, discuss some stuff. Is that okay?
Absolutely. Yeah, he's got my number, I, yeah.
Actually, he doesn't. He asked me if I could get it from you, if that's okay.
Yeah. So Gary is, has been a realtor for quite a while. Has been in town for a long time. I think that's just the kind of person we're looking for. So I, I think that's a great idea.
Did they stack down in Winter Harbor?
I believe so.
I mean, that road, Butterfall, okay. Winter Harbor way, didn't that where they?
I think so, yeah.
They have the claws and the dates or something.
Then it was Anderson's down up, either there or something, yeah, whatever.
Well, I mean, to bring it up, I mean, as I've said from the beginning, I'm not gonna have time to be chairman here very quickly. It is, there's more time than I have. It takes more time than I have. There's very, you know, this is relatively young board, and the fact that many of the people on board don't have tremendous amount of experience with land use. And there's very few people in town who can do that. Fenton is certainly one of them, who has expressed interest in doing it in the past. So again, I would ask the selectmen to reach out to Fenton, or talk to Fenton, or whatnot, and see what can be worked out.
If you wanna do that. So who's, who's here now? Is, I mean, I assume Tony's on vacation?
Yeah, Tony's vice chairman.
And John is?
Uh, John is.
A member.
A member, yeah.
Who's the other?
Russ Stevens was an alternate.
And Lorraine.
And Lorraine's a member.
Uh, I would be glad to stay on as a member, whatnot, but as I've said in the beginning, like, there's no way. I mean, not only that, but.
Higher.
Not only that, but I know Leanne has mentioned this on multiple occasions, and we all cover our ears, because we don't wanna hear it. But, you know, when the master plan is done, Leanne is not going to do this anymore. Which, again, it's, you cannot just whistle up a planning board secretary, because there's not many people who know land use and things like that. And as we know, the technicalities of making sure things are posted correctly, and things like that are difficult, so we need experience.
Um, I just have a question along the same lines. Leanne, do you know, if, if, I mean, if, when you are or do planning to leave, do you know anybody else with the experience that would possibly wanna come on and replace you here? Well, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, that's what you want to do. No, I'm honestly, well, my point is, just from a continuity standpoint, if you do know somebody, or possibly somebody would be interested, if they came on for six months and shadowed you, it would be a huge help for getting this cold.
I mean, I probably know one person, but she has a full-time job and she does ZBA.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody that would be interested in you, yeah.
I just don't know, I'm not from Tuckton Borough, so I don't know people in the, not that you have to have someone, I'm, I'm from Wolfborough.
I don't care, you could.
I don't.
Well, my, my point is, sooner rather than later than somebody coming into a cold that's never done it before, if you could find somebody that shadowed. I mean, in the, it's, it's really a board problem, not your problem, but my point is, it would be a really good consideration, just because of your knowledge and what's going on here.
Well, I guess what I would suggest is, the way that I was acquired by the board, was the chairman reached out to, actually, Rob Hausman, who's the former town planner in Wolfborough, and asked if he knew anybody. So maybe if we reached out to other planning departments.
Why don't we reach out to?
That have admins.
Moltenborough?
Is theirs part-time, I don't know.
They have a full-time, they have Moltenborough.
They have a planner, right.
Well, no, they have a planner. They also have a full-time planning board secretary, which is Bonnie.
Right.
And then, and then they probably have a recording secretary for the planning board.
I do not know if they have that. I have not met her if they do, but, and then in Oscepe, you have, I believe, a planning board secretary as well. Those would be the two places I would look to, and perhaps Wolfborough.
Well, yeah, I just, I love Wolfborough and Kathy. Kathy might be, but she's only done it for eight months. She has no previous experience. She has no knowledge of the RSA's. I mean, she's great as far as doing minutes. I mean, it depends on what you want and what you can get, so.
I think that if you don't have somebody who's very knowledgeable about the, you know, the RSA's as far as right to know, notifications, and things like that, whatever you say by hiring someone who doesn't know very much, you're gonna spend illegal fees straight out whatever is messed up.
Yeah, and those other towns have planners, so it's, yeah, big difference.
Yeah, I, I mean, honestly, I don't see Tuckton Borough to plan a level, considering most of the time, nothing's going on here. And, I mean, the agenda's been super quiet, obviously, other than, you know, cleaning up stuff.
But you have to have.
The secretary's important, very important part of this, from all my three years of experience on the.
Yeah. I mean, the other option, like, I have a friend who's the, that's my wife's friend, who's the planning board secretary for Summersworth. And, you know, sometimes they take a second, that's Leanne, you know, take a second now, especially a small town, that's really pretty easy, you know, but.
Well, that's why I'm saying, if someone's doing Moltenborough, they may want.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what happened with me. You know, I was doing Wolfborough, but I had the time to do Tuckton Borough too.
Well, Bonnie, I know Bonnie works a second job. She may be interested in, you know.
I like Bonnie.
And she's more than capable. Yeah, I deal with Bonnie on a regular basis.
She, she is.
That might be worth a reach.
Twenty-eight years of experience.
Oh, yeah, no, huge. Yeah, she's, she's good to work with. She's, it's worth a question. My, that's the only reason I bring it up, instead of hitting a cold turkey someday.
I have to go to Moltenborough somehow, anyway. I'll ask Bonnie.
Okay, great, we will.
Or, nothing else. She knows most of the people that are in use, whatever, anything else.
You know, you know who else you might talk to is, speaking of land use, is the, the, the master plan people, I'm blanking out on all of that.
Lakes Ridge.
Lakes Ridge.
Lakes Ridge is planted. They may have a person or list of people.
You know who else might be interested in that, I don't know, just a couple, you know, a few of the law firms in the area who deal with land use. Just a couple, you know, a few of the law firms in the area who deal with land use. A lot of times they'll have to either an office manager, a paralegal, or somebody.
We don't see that many lawyers in the office. Yeah, anybody that's been in a real estate office would have a pretty good handle on a lot of it. Other than, the specialty that Leanne has is the timing and notices and all the rest of it. I mean, that's, that's the biggest part of keeping this out of trouble.
Well, it's teachable, though.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're just gonna be familiar with, um, the RSAs and move around, like, I just, you know, with the lifetime thing, I just pulled it up. I knew where to go. It's just gonna get comfortable, and you're gonna educate yourself.
Yeah.
It can be learned, that's for sure.
Steve, you interested in a part-time job?
I got one now.
You can do it now.
All right, Tom, you're doing good.
Yeah.
All right, uh, annual report.
Okay, so I prepared it. I'd like you guys to read it, proof it. See if I need to add more. I don't know what else to add, but trying to be thorough about what we did last year. The master plan stuff was basically mirrored from the year before, because we haven't really made a lot of schedules in that area.
Any mirrored from her at all?
No, so that's on my to-do list.
Okay.
Because we need to start scheduling.
I've been paying them to be slow, so that you can't leave.
Do you know what? Wow, you're leaving? You're leaving?
Yep.
Did you, uh, who's that name you got?
I don't... He's at Upton and, uh, whatever, up in North Con...
Because Rogers...
Roger? Interesting conversation.
Yes.
I had Roger, when we were talking about something else. And Roger indicated that he's, uh, he may not be retiring, that, uh, he's down to the point that he likes the workload he has and the clients he has. And, uh, so, and so, I was under the impression he was retiring effective January one.
Doesn't mean that we can't seek.
Right. I think it would be a bad idea to talk to the gentleman at Upton and, um, whatever it was. Just for some background on how we found that name, Jack and I were talking to, uh, one of the engineers on some projects, uh, for the Tom Box and something like that. And, uh, he deals with a lot of the, um, a lot of sticky waterfront projects, DES projects and stuff like that. And we just said, hey, who do you, who do you use in land use? That's good. And he just, like, was like, this is the guy. He's, he's great. He's reasonably affordable. And he only deals... He does land use and he only deals in the municipality.
Thanks, I'll tie it up.
Yeah. So, I think it makes sense at least to reach out and have a conversation.
Yeah. So, I mean, like we've talked about, a lot of times the law firms, it's, it's good. It's, in my experience, it's been it's... It's usually best to deal with lawyers specializes in whatever the field is that you're in. And if it's land use and a land use attorney, you know, they're not doing a will one day and, uh, walk the record the next, you know? They're... It's what they do. They don't look things up. They just know what they are, because they do it every single day. Especially with the guy who deals with the primary municipality, because he's, he knows what the liability of not posting to be...
Well, the benefit to somebody that practices in a specific area of the law, the law, is not only are they familiar with the written law, but they're also familiar with the case law.
Yeah.
And, and so that all of this stuff just percolates up there as they deal with the stuff that comes across the desk and, and, uh, you get...
So, why don't we...
Better direction.
Why don't you give them a call and see if he's... Wants to chat.
Yeah.
Whether that's a phone call or he wants to come down here. Just say Tyler from Horizon is right in there. Anybody? Any input?
Oh, no.
Yeah. Done?
You would take it?
Um, planning board schedule?
Just FYI, I just prepared the schedule, even though we just changed it. But that's what people are used to, so I'm gonna leave it, newly, and I already posted the cancellation notice on the website. So, I did.
Okay.
Uh, last public comment?
I do have other business.
All right, before we get to public comment, what do we have to release?
We just have that we received, um, I believe Matt and I received an email a couple hours ago from Roger Murray stating that he reviewed the final changes to the covenants, bylaws, restrictions for Shawview. No, Clark House, I'm sorry, Clark House. And, um, Clark House Trust, and so now we're ready to finalize that.
Yep, and for some more background on that, just in case you may remember this. Apparently, there was changes to the condominium regulations at a certain point, and because Attorney, um, Walker called and apologized it was taking so long, but basically his boilerplate for condominium regu... You know, supervision.
Years old.
He had to redraw his entire thing, so that was the holdup. So, also something for us to be aware of, the regulations changed about two years ago, so... Another thing, just for the board to know, we did, Jack and I and Steve did walk his, which I think came up, uh, his pit and blaze and flat the edge of the grummed-out area. Easy.
Nice and brisk.
Definitely. It was a great walk this morning.
Kind of drew it as best we could, so...
Um, so the last two items for that are the perk and the, uh, we just have to drive some rods in the round for renovations. And that was it.
Needs to be about forty, fifty degrees warm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A little less frozen, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, that's what has to be done before I get my signature?
It was a condition of approval, so yes. You planning on digging any dirt anytime in that?
Uh, no, no, I'm just, I'm just curious. What my thought process on that is, I'd like to have my approval or my signature, or what... I've got the approval. I'd like to get my signature, so that when I do my intent to excavate this year, I have a number.
When are you gonna do the intent?
Well, it's the first of April is when they do that.
That should be on a flag there. You can get a pole dug by then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just do the permit and it gets a number, right?
But, but, let's slow down a minute here.
Okay.
The conditions of my approval, it was a move to approve it, the site plan review, and the conditions don't have a perk test.
Right, and I found those in the rules after the fact.
Right, but you can't... These were the conditions that were staying here that you approved tonight. You can't add that. I'd be more than happy to do that, but that shouldn't hold me up from getting my signature.
I, I agree, but...
I'd be more than happy to dig it down.
If you're, if you're willing to, could you...
Right, I just don't know if that's gonna happen.
We're, we're not gonna try to...
First of mine.
Yeah, we're not gonna try to hold you.
You got an open pit wall?
Oh, yeah, I got some, I got some open banks, but there's no water.
Go up to the top of that, dig a foot away. I mean, you know, seriously, I'm not being funny, because if, if there's no water there, right here, go a foot away, there's no water there.
Well, I, I think, you know, there, you're only allowed to excavate down to where I think it's five feet of the water table or something like that. So, I think that's what they're trying to... It's in his int... It's in your interest.
No, no. Yeah, no, I'm not against that. I'm just saying that that isn't one of my...
That was something that we didn't catch at the time we did it.
Right, yes.
It's the same thing with the stump disposal. It's something, you know, there's a height above water table, so...
Yeah, right.
The deeper you can go, and if there's no water, the better off you are.
It's the elevation of the highest annual average groundwater table within or next to the position of excavation, so...
But, you are right. That was part of the condition of approval, so...
So, I'm just gonna go in my low spot there, dig a...
Well...
Dig a hole.
But, but reading that in reality is, you're better off to dig that at the, at the bottom of the excavation.
Yeah, exactly.
You're not to talk, because you want to get down to where the real...
You want that...
You want to know where the water is.
Deep as possible.
Right.
Well, yeah, it depends if you're trying to just grade or excavate. It doesn't give... But anyway, I get to...
Well, the deeper the water...
He has one low spot where he's pretty much done now. Just gonna dig it there and he just move off the rest of it.
Because see, one thing, you, you, if you dig on an excavated area, you don't have, you're not gonna read roots, you're not gonna read a normal test pit for an undisturbed area to disc... So, really what you're gonna do is dig to actually hit water.
Correct.
It's a difference. Yeah, that's why.
Well, the only thing we're looking for is seasonal high water table.
Right.
Right, but the only way you're gonna find it in a sand pit is dig till we have a little water, you know?
Exactly.
You don't have a seasonal, you don't have an undisturbed seasonal high water table, because it's disturbed. It's a different... But anyway, yeah.
Might not even be frosty now, I don't know, covered with snow, yeah.
Trying to say.
But I need a soil scientist to do that for me.
Yeah, it's just... Says, it says, yeah, to the elevation of the highest annual groundwater table, so they can read. I don't think they can read modeling in sand anyway, so...
There is a, that's my point. It's excavated, it's, yeah. It's gotta be undisturbed, that's why we have it. Because you don't have roots. If you dug up fifteen feet, there's nothing growing.
Right.
You don't have trees.
But if I dug ten feet below the bottom of my low part, the low part...
Right, and just let it open up and see if water shows up.
Or I would, I would say, if you can dig ten feet and it's dry, and there's no water, and the regulation says you gotta be five feet above the water table, you can take five more feet out of the pit.
Good.
Oh, yeah, good, yeah.
You know, so... If you can dig thirty feet, if there's no water, then you can go down twenty-five feet.
Right, that's the point.
And my bags will go... Right. You have to one, yeah.
But thank you for being willing to do that.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it's best interest for me to do it, have it documented anyhow.
We're not, we're not gonna try to hold you up.
Is that the state reg or is that what we...
It's in 155E.
I mean, as soon as, you know, I'll, we'll sign it. Hopefully not they, so we'll get somebody else.
You didn't read the Hotel California clause, or you can't do it.
Yes.
Oh, on the...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just after you're done with this.
We have the legal opinion from, uh, Roger, and I would like a motion to release it, and so to public, so saying that everything's great on the condo subdivision, so that we can, uh, release it and put it in the file.
Okay.
So, so do we get to look at it before we release it?
Sure. You know what? I don't think it's...
I will email it, um, because it's in my email. I don't have it printed out.
I'll, I'll tell you what. In the interest of getting this done, I will read it to everyone.
You read it and I'm gonna forward it right now.
Dear Matt, I have reviewed the declaration, bylaws and articles of the agreement. Schedule percentage of undivided interest and proposed warranty deed for the above caption drawn in and in. The above caption, by the way, is a Clark House contract, and I don't know. I find them in order and hereby approve these documents. If you have any questions, please let me know, Richard.
Should I ask?
Take forward.
Yep.
So, my move that we open this...
Alan. So, we call it, release the...
Release. Release the opinion to the sample.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Mr. S?
Hi.
Hi. Now we're done?
What's up?
Now we're done?
Yes, so I'll...
All right.
Now we're done?
All right.
Can I have motion to adjourn?
I will second that.
All right, all right, great.